Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order pursuant to school board policy 139, school board member participation in meetings by electronic communication. School Board members Adele Jackson of the Brentsville District, Diane Ralston of the Nijabsco District, will participate in the meeting through electronic means from their homes due to medical condition that prevents their physical attendance. School Board member Lily Jesse of the Okaquan District will participate electronically from her home due to caring for a family member with a medical condition. The clerk will so note it for each, so noted in the minutes of the meeting. A motion is in order for the approval of the closed session agenda. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Zargarpur, second. Any discussion? Okay, please vote. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Jesse, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jesse votes yes.
Vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on to the motion to enter closed session, a motion is in order. Ms. Jackson?
I move that pursuant Virginia Code Section 2.2-3, 3711 and 2.2, 37112, the Prince William County School Board enter a closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss with the superintendent and staff the resignation, performance, discipline, appointment, and release of specific employees and officers, and to receive advice from the division council on related legal issues as provided by VA Code Section 2.2-3, 711A1 and 8. Two, to consult with the division council and to receive advice on legal matters requiring the advice of council and/or pertaining to actual or probable litigation as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, 2, 7, and 8. And three, to consult with the staff and division council regarding legal requirements specific to the pandemic which require legal advice and guidance as provided by Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Williams, seconds. Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Jesse, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jesse votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Okay, at this time, the Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return to open session in approximately one hour. Okay, the Prince William County School Board will now be returning to open session. What did she do here with this? We are now moving on to the closed session action item, approval of appointments and releases 8.01. Ms. Jackson? Where am I? Oh, 7.01, closed session certification. Oh, right, closed session certification. Sorry, 7.01. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that pursuant Virginia Code 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of January 19, 2022, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur? Ms. Zargarpur, second to motion. Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Jesse, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jesse votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Okay, sorry. And moving on to closed session action item 8.01, approval of appointments and releases. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointments and releases of specific employees and the retention of outside counsel as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second? Ms. Williams?
Second.
Ms. Williams, second. The motion, any discussion? Okay, please vote. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jackson votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Jesse, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jesse votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on to 8.02, approval of division councils' legal recommendations. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board having delegated to the superintendent the authority to implement such COVID-19 mitigation measures as necessary to ensure the safe and efficient operation of the schools and provide in-person instruction, authorize the actions recommended by division council, excuse me, division council as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
Second.
Ms. Williams, seconds. Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jackson votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Jesse, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jesse votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on, at this time, I'd like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Dania Sharifi, our student representative is here this evening, please lead us in the pledge, ma'am.
Pledge allegiance to the flags of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, wonderful. At this point, we'll move on to the approval of the public meeting agenda. A motion is in order. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
My second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jackson votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Jesse, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jesse votes yes.
The vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda, a motion is in order. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams?
My second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Jackson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jackson votes yes. Ms. Ralston, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Ralston votes yes. Ms. Jesse, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Jesse votes yes.
The vote is seven yes, one abstain. Williams, motion passed.
We're moving on to the citizen comment time. Those citizens who've signed up in advance with the clerk may address the school board this evening when they are called to the podium. The citizen comment period for the regular school board meetings is limited to one hour with the first half hour reserved for comments on agenda items only, and the second half hour for comments on agenda items or other topics germane to the operations and policies of Prince William County schools. Citizens signed up to speak on agenda items must speak to the agenda item they have identified or they will be asked to step down. We have no speakers on agenda items this evening. We have six on non-agenda items. Speakers will have three minutes to speak. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you'll be asked to step aside. When you are called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. The first speaker I have on the list this evening is Rebecca Morgan.
Rebecca Morgan, 5420 Bantry Court, Woodbridge, Virginia, 22193. Chairman Latif, Vice Chairman Jackson, and members of the board and Superintendent McDade, good evening. I'm here tonight as a citizen who has the distinct honor of being a lifelong county resident. Okaquan Elementary, Woodbridge Middle, and Woodbridge High are the three schools in which I began my education journey. And when I married, my husband and I made the conscious decision to raise our children right here in the county in which I grew up, the county I love so much. Tonight, I'm also speaking to you as a parent of three Prince William County schoolchildren who couldn't be more different from each other, all incredibly bright and like me all those many years ago. They need to be challenged, expected to succeed, helped when struggling, and celebrated when successful. I'm here because I believe that your new strategic plan does just that. It really encompasses what I envision for my children. I want them to be critical thinkers. I want them to be visionary innovators, and I want them to be resilient, global thinkers. I want them to be the best. That's why they grow up here. Today's school system and issues within are anything but easy. Week after week, I hear you make decisions based on what you believe is best for our children, and I do not envy your position. There are so many considerations and factors today that honestly I could never have imagined them when I was a school child, masks or no masks, vaccines or no vaccines, in-person learning or at home, social media and all that comes with us, and let's not forget social isolation. However, through it all, I believe that there is a thread that runs through every single person in this room, and that's clearly that we all care about doing what's right for our children, our community, and our families. I love the vision of this strategic plan that every student will graduate on time with the knowledge, skills, and habits of mind necessary to create a thriving future for themselves and their community, and I love that the mission of the plan starts with serving as trusted partners in education with our students, families, and community. I can tell that that's important because I was surveyed on several occasions for my opinion, and even now on the website, you've asked for even last-minute thoughts on this strategic plan. Dr. Latif, Dr. McDade, I am so hopeful to see that no matter how difficult the challenges are, you keep fighting to make things better. Please don't stop. Our kids need you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jeff Dar.
How you doing? My name is Jeffrey Dar. I live at 13702 Mayfair Court, Dale City, Virginia, 22193. I was calling about an incident that happened to my daughter in school. She was sexually assaulted, and I was wondering if y'all can explain to me how the policy and procedures are for the administrators to handle the situation? I don't know. Does anybody have any answers, how the process works?
Mr. Dar, we typically don't go and have a back-and-forth here, but we're happy to take your comments by email or appointment and work with you on that.
That, I don't understand. So where do you find the rules and regulations at? Where do the administrators from the school find the rules and regulations of what they're supposed to, like, they have policy and procedures?
Mr. Dar, I can have someone work with you on that if you want to step over to the side and they can go over where you can find all that.
So I want the public to know. That's why I come here, because I want the public to know.
So we won't be answering you, but you can certainly keep asking.
Well, I mean.
While you're standing.
I want to know the school's definition of sexual assault, because my daughter was told, she's standing right there, that if it's above the clothes, it's not sexual assault. And that's the way the county does the kids here? It's messed up. That's my daughter, and no one wants to do nothing about it. Suspend the boy for one day for improper touching, and I don't think that's right. So somebody needs to do something. Somebody needs to look into matter and do something, because there's more kids out there that y'all are not doing nothing, letting stuff slide under, and the only person hurting is the kids. And I don't think it's right. Somebody needs to look into the matter and do what y'all need to do, because it, and I like to have an investigation, because I'm pretty sure if it happened to her, it's happened to plenty of children here. It's ridiculous. I mean, that's all I got to say. I don't know if I can talk to you or whatever. I don't know what the next step is. So I just wanted to come here and explain myself and figure out what I need to do next. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. He'll escort you out and work with you to help you.
Mr.
Dr. McDade?
Mr. Dar, we have an associate here that is ready to speak with you.
Sean Daly?
That's good evening to y'all from Perkins. Good evening. My name is Sean Daly. I live at 5605 Swift Creek Court, Haymarket, Virginia. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Superintendent, elected officials, thanks for having me here. Thanks for allowing me to speak for my 2 minutes and 46 seconds. First thing I'd like to say is, I don't know when we decided what rules we were going to decide to follow and what rules we weren't. I'm very embarrassed to sit here and say that if we do not comply with Governor Yonkin's order of masks, then you have failed in leadership, you have failed in commitment. What we've done for two years is not working. Your strategic plan may be wonderful, but my plan in Haymarket, Virginia, is kids who are behind school and grade level, kids who don't want to wear masks. I'll ask the elected officials, have you been to the schools? Have you tallied the parents? Have you asked? Superintendent, have you talked to the teachers and the principals and the staff? Because my thought was the school board governs. The superintendent administers. Why the good doctor decided to reevaluate publicly what the governor's executive order is, is beyond me. That's politics, and you're playing it on the backs of our children, and I do not appreciate it as a citizen. The next thing I'd like to talk about is leading by example and taking responsibility for our children. Yes, that's me. I don't hold the teachers responsible for my kid to learn. It is my job to grow and make sure my son is able to compete in a world such as this and to be educated, informed, and to make a decision. How can my son even go to school when you guys can't even get along with the governor? You're going to decide what we can follow and what we can't? Here's the deal. I've been a leader my entire life, and I will take responsibility for what I have to. And I'm asking you to do the same, because your leadership is failing our children. And our children, how are they ever going to lead? Because if they have to lead by your example, we're all going to be in trouble. Now, I don't have a strategic plan, but I do have this. What we've done for two years doesn't work, and the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and getting the same results. So I will ask you, if you are not going to follow the governor's order, then have you made a pulse check to find out that the kids are wearing their masks correctly? Have you made sure who's vaccinated and who's not vaccinated sitting next to my child? No, you shouldn't have to. That should be on me and my neighbor. I thank you for your time. Yes, I am upset and I apologize, but I'm passionate about this county, our freedom, and the right to choose. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Bucky?
Good evening, school board, parents, fellow citizens of Prince William County. My name is David Bukey. I reside in Oaksville, Virginia. I'm here to talk about the mask mandate, I'm sorry, the executive order written by Governor Yonkin over the weekend. I'm going to start back in March of 2020. March of 2020, we temporarily closed schools. We closed schools for a couple weeks to figure this thing out. Then a few weeks turned into the remainder of the year with absolutely no idea of where we were going to go. In Fall of 2020, still no return, but we moved to two days a week, closed on Fridays. Somehow COVID doesn't affect you every other day, and it doesn't affect you on Fridays. So we went virtual and in-person. Then in 2021, SB 1303 passed, signed by Governor Northam. And I'm paraphrasing the law here, reasonable measures must be taken to keep schools open five days a week as written and signed by the Virginia Assembly and Governor Northam. In the start of 2021, Governor Northam gave schools the power to change whether they choose to wear masks or not. You all chose to wear the masks. The school board followed the direction of the governor every step of the way and every part of the pandemic. Last Saturday, Governor Yonkin signed an executive order giving masks-wearing the choice to the parents. I'm not here to debate masks or no masks, whether they work or they don't work, or the science behind any of that. I'm here to state that you have the duty and the obligation to follow the direction of the governor of Virginia, just like you have every single step of the way since this pandemic started. You can't pick and choose the laws and orders you would like to follow. Virginia overwhelmingly elected Governor Yonkin not for his politics, but to give the voice of the children back to those of the parents. This isn't a mask ban. You can still choose to wear masks. It's a choice. It's a choice given to the people, the very people that elected our new governor, and those are the people that you work and serve for. It's time to do your job. It's time to do your job and follow the will of the people and the citizens in the county that you have represented to serve. We're all taxpayers. We are deserved an education, and we voted for this, and we voted for this overwhelmingly. This is the overwhelming will of the people and this great Commonwealth of Prince William County, I'm sorry, the great Commonwealth of Virginia and this wonderful county of Prince William. I urge that you overturn the rule of the superintendent and you allow the parents to make the decision on January 24. Thank you.
Jesse Graham?
Sorry, I had to do this. Address is 10851, Clara Barton Drive, Bristow. Okay. Well, I'm back here again, and obviously there's other parents that feel the same way I do. As the previous gentleman stated, government, or Governor Yonkin won the election. Obviously, the majority of people in this state, he won it for a reason. At this point, we've all seen videos of masks, no masks. We've seen the videos of Dr. Fauci that goes back 10 years ago, all the way up to right before the pandemic, where he says masks don't work. Okay, science changes. I get that. Sometimes science does change. But now we have two years of data through this pandemic, two years of data where you see states like New York and California who have strictly followed the mask mandates, who have done everything, and then you have states like Florida and Texas. Is there any major difference as far as contraction and spreading of the disease? No. So why do we think it's going to keep changing? Do we think the school is going to, that these students are wearing masks right? I talked to my daughter, who goes to Patriot High School. Every time the teacher's not looking, the kids have their masks down. You all should know that. We were all teenagers at one point. You think they're going to follow it? If no one's looking, they walk through the halls with their mask pulled below their nose anyway. Give them the freedom. Give the parents the choice. I'm not asking you to say masks aren't allowed in school. I'm asking you to say, I don't have to make my daughter wear a mask, and that's what the governor told you guys to do. I mean, who in here actually knows the CDC and WHO regulation, or standard appropriate regulations for mask-wearing? I'll read them real fast. Clean your hands before you put on your mask, as well as before you take it off and after any time you touch it. Make sure it covers both your nose, mouth, and chin. When you take your mask off, store it in a clean plastic bag every day, and if it's disposable, throw it away each time you take it off. Since I've been in this room, I have seen almost every person in this room touch their mask more than one time, adjust their mask. I didn't watch one person walk out of this room and wash their hands. Nobody's actually doing it the right way. So why do we keep doing it? It's become ridiculous. Now, you guys are told by the governor in an order to stop it, and yet you guys are fighting it. Let the parents choose. And I tell you what, obviously, there's other parents in here. If you guys do not follow it, I am sure that me, as long as a lot of other parents, will be taking legal action.
Scott Abel?
Scott Abel, 14495 Shamberry Circle, Haymarket, Virginia. Chairman Latif, members of the school board, Superintendent, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to request that you follow the executive order issued by Governor Yonkin, which reaffirms that my wife and I are 100% in control of the impact, or excuse me, of the decisions that impact the care and well-being of my children. I'm requesting that you allow us the choice whether to send our children to school with or without a mask. In February 2013, the Virginia General Assembly codified a Virginia Supreme, sorry, Virginia Supreme Court's opinion affirming the fundamental parental rights through the passage of SB 908, and that's declarative in the Virginia Code under 1-240.1. It says, "We have the right to direct the upbringing, education, and care of our children; and such rights shall not be infringed." By not honoring this executive order, you are infringing that right. You are also making this blatantly political on the backs of our children. That is highly disappointing for educators and parents in this school system. Highly disappointing. In addition, their desire to adding this to the Virginia Code was so parents would not have to look to the federal courts for relief on parental matters, and it's my hope that we do not have to go to the Virginia or the federal court to find relief and to compel you to adhere to this executive order. For those on the board who are adamant, we ignored the executive order and cut out parental rights and continue to follow an antiquated recommendation on masks from the CDC. I'm curious as to which other CDC recommendations you are following that are part of their school guidance. For example, they've recently recommended that football, wrestling, basketball, and band be halted or moved to virtual. Has the board adopted this COVID policy? Last September, the CDC recommended the use of clear plastic shields for teachers and staff of children learning to read with developmental, learning to read or with developmental or special needs. Did the board adopt this policy? We know that the mask policy is harming our children. It is creating significant learning developmental delays, reading and speech issues. Socialization issues are also becoming more prevalent. I am, in closing, I'm asking that you honor and adhere to the executive order on 124, that you allow parents to make the choice, that the mask mandate has and will continue to have enormous negative impacts on educational outcomes, and the rest, and yet the risk to this policy is intended to mitigate is incredibly low. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you to all our citizens who came this evening. That concludes citizen comment time. We will move on to our student representative. Our student representative this evening is, as I stated earlier, Dania Sharifi. She's a senior at Gainesville High School and joins us on the dialysis. She's the senior, she's a senior at Gainesville High School and joins us on the dial this evening. Ms. Sharifi.
Good evening to the school board and to the Prince William County community. My name is Danya Sharifi, and I'm one of the student representatives for Prince William County this school year. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight about updates regarding student concerns and updates on my goals for this year. School has gotten back in session from winter break, and students are ready to start transitioning to the second semester in a few weeks. I'm gonna start off by congratulating the seniors at Prince William County Schools. It was a long and grueling process, but you guys have made it through the college application process. Congratulations. My student rep's status support for tonight's meeting is regards to safety in all matters. With coming back to school and the rise of the new Omicron variant, it is necessary for students, staff, and teachers to continue practicing COVID safety procedures to prevent the increasing speed of COVID. I've heard concerns from the community who are worried about the surge of new cases over the past week, who do not want to go back to virtual school instruction. For the most part, students have been doing well in wearing masks and being safe. However, we want to remind students that without these precautions, you may risk returning to completely virtual school. With the shown benefits of in-person learning, we wouldn't want to risk that. I would just like to bring attention to the concern that teachers, students, and parents have told me and shown, and hopefully, stronger precautions will be taken. Secondly, I've heard complaints from several students and parents about the recent weakened snow, reports about the icy roads, sidewalks that had been plowed, and dangers for student drivers have all been brought up since the students had to go to school on Tuesday. However, given the code orange tomorrow, I think the concerns from students and parents was voiced and heard by Prince William County. So, we applaud that and are grateful for you guys recognizing our voices. The new code orange policy is great because it allows students to meet with their teachers during office hours and beneficially counts as an instructional school day. The code orange prevents accidents, promotes safety, and supports students, along with teachers who do not want to fall behind on schedule, but also do not want to jeopardize the safety of students. Overall, the code orange is an amazing new policy that has been introduced this year, and we are excited to see how it goes into action for the first time tomorrow. As for student representative matters, Charlotte McCleary and I are working towards our goals for this year. Collectively, we are seeking to get feedback from students about the benefits of a later school start time and how it would positively impact students. One of my, one of the other focuses for this year has been the dress code, specifically helping to ensure that students and staff are adequately informed about the current policies. Our goal is to create resources to make sure that everyone understands the new dress code, for example, a new dress code policy video. We are working with the Student Senate and Office of Student Services to solicit feedback from their schools to help us understand more about the student perspective, about both the school start times and the dress code. Thank you for your time tonight and for giving me the chance to be the student voice for Prince William County. Again, as we mentioned from time to time, we encourage all students to reach out to us. We do actually have an Instagram and media account, being developed for our Twitter account. We have the handle @PWCSRep. You may contact us there and be sure to follow for updates within, like all schools, and about students in the county. We're always available to hear your concerns and questions. Thank you all, and have a good rest of your night.
Thank you, Ms. Sharifi. Next, we'll move on to superintendent's time, Dr. McDade.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. On Monday, I was pleased to celebrate the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by watching the annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. MLK Oratorical Competition and Program, hosted by the Prince William County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta. The six PWCS student finalists competed virtually before a panel of judges, and I was inspired and impressed by our amazing young leaders. Additionally, I want to thank our staff, who worked hard on Monday to ensure we were able to open our schools on time yesterday. Our facility, custodial, and transportation staff worked diligently on Monday to prepare our schools and buses. Due to tomorrow's weather uncertainty during the morning commute hours, we will be implementing the code orange. A reminder that on code orange days, students must connect with their teachers during office hours and should be using the data access instruction asynchronously. During this school year, I have often shared my desire to provide in-person instruction as safely as possible. We know in-person learning is the most effective for our students. As we continue to face the challenges of the ongoing spread of the COVID-19 Omicron variant, it is imperative that our schools continue to use a multi-layered mitigation strategy to reduce the impact of the virus on our students and their families, our staff members, and our visitors. This past weekend, Governor Yonkin shared a series of executive orders, including future changes to the guidance on mask requirements in our schools. It is our understanding that the Virginia Department of Education will also be issuing revised guidance as well. We all share a desire to return to a sense of normalcy as soon as possible, and we remain committed to doing so in a safe and thoughtful manner with the health of our students and staff as our priority. When considering a change to our mitigation strategies, it is important that we keep in mind the possible impact that those changes may have on our ability to continue in-person instruction. As stated earlier this week, we are maintaining our current mitigation strategy, including universal masking. This is especially important during the surge of the Omicron virus, and if any changes are made, we will notify our community as soon as possible. By the end of this week, we plan to communicate updates to our quarantine procedures based on revised guidance from local, state, and national health officials. Our new procedures will help decrease the amount of time our students miss in-person instruction due to the exposure to the COVID-19 virus. Please watch our website and your inbox for these new updates related to quarantine guidance. As a reminder, the deadline for applying to most specialty programs is February 1st. These programs provide excellent opportunities for students in elementary, middle, and high school to explore a wide variety of special programs in our schools. These specialty programs give students the chance to investigate careers ranging from building trades to advanced computer science. Be sure to visit our website for more information. Lastly, next week is the final week of the semester. Next Friday, the 28th, is a teacher workday. I encourage all students and families to review grades and student progress via Parent View or Student View. And next month, we will share an update with the school board on the overall academic progress to date this school year. Mr. Chairman, this concludes superintendent's report.
At that time, we will move to Board Matters. I will start with Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. It's been a short week, and also with MLK Day on Monday. Not a lot of time between now and then, but I do want to give a couple of recognitions. So, on Saturday, I was proud to attend the Potomac High School Wrestling Tournament, where the seniors were recognized for their contributions over the last four years. The team took an overall third place, so I want to thank the team there. Tuesday morning, I had the pleasure of visiting my last middle school since returning back from the holiday break, Potomac Shores, where I had the pleasure of definitely getting my steps in and visiting the three floors and welcoming the teachers back and saying hello. Last night, I attended the Forest Park High School Girls' Basketball Game, where they defeated Woodbridge High School in a 53-50 showdown. I also want to thank our school division, Dr. McDade and her team, Student Services and such, for presenting last night at the Dumfries Town Council a presentation on our specialty programs. And I do want to say, you know, one thing I want to mention is, you know, I have recently been speaking to some of our hardest workers in our division, the building school nurses. We are blessed, as a county, to have an assigned nurse to each of our buildings. That is not something that's everywhere, and I think that's a great feat for our school division. I say now because, you know, with COVID-19, there are increased demands that we are placing on our nurses, and many that I've spoken to are physically exhausted. The current contact tracing methods that we have have resulted in many of our nurses working late into the evenings and in the week, onto the weekends. I spoke to a nurse this weekend who was in the middle of making calls Sunday night. My concern overall is, I fear unless we review the current contact tracing and develop more ways of supporting our nurses, that many of these valuable employees will seek employment elsewhere. Keeping our students in person has been my goal since July 15th of 2020. We need to do this safely, but also be cognizant of the increased pressures on our nurses. Thank you for the time.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I know a lot of students are happy to be able to have the chance to try out code orange, and I hope that everybody enjoys that new experience and works hard on their schoolwork as the semester, as the semester is ending. I want to thank Ms. Jackson for holding office hours with me at the Gainesville-Brentsville District Library, or sorry, the Haymarket-Gainesville Library last evening, and thank you to those who came out to talk with us to share your concerns. I want to offer congratulations to Mahmoud Kabir from Bull Run Middle School for winning the middle school category at the Martin Luther King Contest this last Monday. Very exciting. He did a great job. The six finalists, three at the middle school level and three at the high school level, worked very hard, I could tell. They put a lot of time into their speeches and a lot of thought, and their oratorical skills were inspiring. This last Saturday was the 18th Annual Off-the-Wall High School Art Exhibition and Competition at the Art Factory in Manassas, and I was able to go to that and see the artwork and visit with some of the students there. There were 30 students who entered, original works of art, and their artwork was very impressive. So, I commend all the students who entered the competition, because that's a challenge in and of itself, and congratulate those who received awards on their artwork. Also, this week, from Gainesville District, Abdullah Yusuf Sae was highlighted by the school division, and I wish to say a few words about Abdullah, who is a senior at Battlefield High School. He served as the Student Senate Representative for BHS last year, and I was able to work closely with him on student issues. And I commend him for his commitment to promote unity and for his leadership and vision. In my experience, he is an individual worthy of the highest praise, and I want to thank him for looking beyond self to see the needs of others. Congratulations, Yusuf Sae. And thank you to everyone who has expressed thoughts and concerns related to the issue of masking. I understand that it is the hottest topic of the day. There are legal issues involved, science-related issues, huge amounts of data, reporting all kinds of conclusions nationwide, worldwide, and even locally. There are operational issues that are very tricky and very thorny, because we are essentially trying to run a school division, and we want students to be in our schools, and we need our teachers to be in our schools. And of course, there are political issues as well. In a nod to Shakespeare, I feel to quote Richard III, "Now is the winter of our discontent." I appreciate your patience. As we work through all of this, I never thought in the beginning that we would be dealing with such difficulties like masking, almost starting our third year into the pandemic. And I know you're tired of it, and so am I. Above all, I encourage that regardless, we maintain our warm, inviting, accepting atmosphere at our schools and make sure that every student, masked or not, feels welcome in our schools and receives the support that they need to succeed. Thanks, everybody, and have a great evening.
Ms. Zargarpur.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. I had an opportunity this week to stop by Hilton High School to see the boys varsity basketball game against Colgan, which is really nice that I get two in one. It's, I gotta say, it's really fun to watch kids in their sports. I always think that, you know, at 51 years old, I could jump out there and do it, but I know better. So, it's so, it's so much fun to watch you guys play. The girls team, I went to the week before. So, keep engaging in those extracurriculars. Speaking of which, I went to Osborn Park to watch their one-act plays, and all I can say is, and I know you know what I mean, that was more perfect. All right. They know what I mean by that. I also got to sit down on Monday and really listen to the students who were speaking at the Martin Luther King Oratorical Competition and Program. Specifically from Hilton, we had Kennedy Sherry Wiley, and I apologize for pronouncing anyone's names wrong. I have a last name that you can, I give you permission to pronounce wrong. Namaya Akusa Tama from Osborn Park High School. You guys did a fantastic job. All of them did. So, keeping in mind that our kids are out there, they're getting into, involved in their sports, their extracurriculars, they're working really hard. I see you guys. I know this pandemic's been really challenging, and we, the adults in the room, are gonna keep working to do things better for you as well. Parents, I know that there are things that come up curricularly. The Department of Education is reviewing the standards of learning. Everything gets a standard of learning. SOL just means standard of learning. Every subject K through 12 gets one, and driver's ed is up for review. You can take a look at the website and look around for that information. I posted something about it on my social media. And finally, for the employees, you know, Mr. Wilk kind of touched on this with the nurses. I have been hearing how hard they've been working, how long it takes to trace. And I know, and we're gonna dig into this mask thing, I love how Ms. Wall phrased this today. I mean, it's got all the issues. So, let's just, not just, that sounds like I'm making light of it, but I'm not. This is hard. This is really hard. Many of us are tired of wearing the mask. I too am looking for an off-ramp at some point. But right now, we're in a little bit of a surge, and I am concerned about how that affects our staffing and our ability to keep our children in person. I am concerned about how people feel about these things. So, I look forward to looking at what data we can use that's really gonna help us make the best decisions we can moving forward. But rest assured, I am tired of it, too. I get it. Thank you all for everything you've been doing. I will modify my last comment here, Dr. Latif. Wear or not wear your mask, wash your hands, keep your distance as best as you can, vaccinate if you choose, and stay well, my friends.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Chairman Latif. Before I say my comments, I want to reserve one special privilege. I no longer have a teenager in my house, but I have one near and dear to my heart. So, it's my duty and obligation to embarrass her on a large public platform and wish her, Ms. Elizabeth, a very happy 17th birthday. And as your godmother and auntie, I hope that it was mortally embarrassing to you, and I love you so much. Now, moving on, to piggyback on the current topic at hand, but not conversation, please wear your mask. It is still policy. It is still what we are doing until we hear otherwise. Please follow the school policy, the current law, and let the courts and everyone else decide whether or not the executive order is or isn't in compliance with the law, as the conversation is out there. To my district, the Woodbridge District, I hear you loud and clear, and some members of the Napco District who have been emailing me. I have not received any email from any side of my eastern end Prince William County that says that they don't want masks. If you want to email me, that's fine. I'm just letting you know that publicly, the majority of my constituents at this point still want to wear masks. We are, my district is the densest and most heavily populated area right now in Prince William County, and it is absolutely 100% crystal clear from my constituents that they prefer to have the masks still in place, although it's not up for debate. It is what it is, and we will let it all get sorted out, as we do with any other controversial topic. But until that occurs, please continue to follow current policy and regulation, and we stand committed to following the direction that we set forth as a board, I would hope, and following along with the current statement of the superintendent, as she just so eloquently mentioned a few minutes ago. I too attended a few events in the past week. I was a proud attendant of the Human Rights Day Celebration for Prince William County. It is always an honor. I want to congratulate my fraternity brothers, Phi Beta Sigma, on their winning the award, and also, Ms. Zargarpur's husband, won an award. I think I mentioned that last time. As always, the MLK Day Event, annual oratorical competition, continues to blow me away every year with the talent, the amazing students that we have here in Prince William County. If you have not seen it, I suggest you see it and watch their speeches, or at least consider attending next year. As our superintendent mentioned, our specialty program application is due February 1st. I encourage everyone to go check it out. Not all programs require a certain GPA or certain requirements. Some are just as simple as pick 1, 2, 3. It is a worthwhile opportunity. I know this as a parent of a specialty program graduate who is currently working in that field. And then, also, a few of us will be attending the VSBA Capital Conference, which will be held next week. It is the opportunity to meet and confer with all of our legislators in the General Assembly. Thank you.
Ms. Jessie.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the teachers and nurses and everyone who's working. It's very difficult, and like Mr. Wilk's, I have received concerns from various people, including the nurses. There's a concern that we may be losing some of the nurses, and I sent a note to Dr. McDade very early on about meeting with the nurses, and I'm hoping that she will get with them and see if there's something that we can do to. We need to keep our nurses in place. We need to keep our nurses in place, and I think we may be on the brink of losing some of those nurses, so I would like to echo what Mr. Wilks has said. I also wanted to give more detail on the Martin Luther King Oratorical, which was held on Monday. It is the 37th, actually, the 37th Martin Luther King Oratorical, I mean, King Day Celebration, the 32nd for the oratorical. First and foremost, Mrs. Mitchell, Sheila Mitchell, who orchestrated this phenomenal program, reported that it was viewed by more than 2,700 people on that day, and that more than 3,700 people have viewed this, I call it a stellar production, since that time. The competition, which selected three middle and three high school speakers, included competitors from the three neighboring school systems, Manassas City, Manassas Park, and our own Prince William. Two awards were presented to the top competitors. Best before the judges and an initial part of the competition, and best before the audience on the day of the competition. The winners were: Middle School winner Mahmoud Kabir. Best before the judges, Bull Run Middle. Siobhan Davis was best before the audience from Marstella. Best for the high school, it looks like Garfield took it away, and Varsa Palani Handy, I think I got that right, won best performance before the judges and the audience on that day. As many of you know, I am a Delta, but Prince William County alumna chapter Delta Sigma Theta had its first celebration 36 years ago with Mr. Joe Bonerice as the speaker. The chapter then supported, which was actually my vision of the youth oratorical five years later. It highlights the skills and talents of our youth and supports Dr. McDade and the research that indicated acceleration and high expectations are the keys to high student performance. I want to thank the Prince William Chapter, especially Mrs. Mitchell and her MLK Committee, and every school in Prince William County, Manassas City, and Manassas Park had coaches who did this as an extra activity. I want to thank them. And I also want to thank the Prince William County Communications, because you did a phenomenal job of communicating. I think that's why we have more than 3,700 people observing. And lastly, I want to thank the parents who allowed us to see their children's amazing talent. And on the masking, I will say this, as a principal for 20 years, I had to make decisions about what's safe in schools. So every summer, I would walk the fields to make sure there was no glass. We had fire drills, we had tornado drills, we had all those drills, but we were dealing with things that we could see. Corona is not something you can see. And so from my perspective as a principal, I would want every child to wear a mask until we find research that support that that is not something that would cause any child. I would not want any child or any adult to be exposed to something that could harm them. If we receive additional information and find that we can, I would like to see children not wear masks, but I cannot say that I support not wearing masks during this epidemic. Thank you.
Ms. Ralston. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. Since last week, it was a short week, I was able to meet with office hours with Ms. Wall. Thank you to all those who came. I'm sorry I cannot be there tonight, or yesterday's meeting. I appreciate having civil conversations, and as we cover complex issues such as masking, just a friendly reminder that comments and input to the strategic plan, they close on February 2nd, and we will be starting the budget season soon. This weekend, I also had the pleasure of watching the MLK Oracle Competition and Program broadcasted online, and I want to just take a moment to congratulate to Marstella Middle School, Siobhan Davis. I enjoyed listening to everybody, and I especially enjoyed listening to Ms. Davis as she made connections between historical African-American female changemakers like Coretta Scott King to present-day voices like Kamala Harris or Stacey Adams. And she has a quote that I hope I do justice. "If women put eagerness in the world, their drive, their passion, the transformation, what we will see is astounding." And she goes on, and she says, "The eagerness to educate from teachers, the undying love from mothers, the kind words from strangers, the empowerment from other girls from school, their spirit influences others to be the change." Ms. Davis, thank you for your words, and I hope I did them justice. Congratulations to all the nominees. Also want to second, like Mr. Wilk, shout out to school nurses, thank all those who came tonight and staff for everything they do every day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Well, another eventful pandemic week. I want to first say, I share the frustration of our community members who came here tonight, who are out there on all sides of this issue, and all sides of pandemic-related questions and issues. I have four children. Four were in the public school last year, two years ago when we shut down. Four were not in the buildings for their education. They did not have their extracurricular activities, they did not have their normal senior year nor their junior years, and it was awful. It was a terrible, terrible experience. What was also terrible was being up here and having to deal with constantly changing guidance, constantly changing recommendations, constantly changing variants, and having to make adjustments on the fly that we all know up here really upsets our community, really triggers tension and high emotion. It was awful. It continues to be awful. I can reassure you that. That is why last year, and you watched our meetings, I fought very strongly to get our kids back in the buildings. I believe that in-person education is and should be our highest priority in the middle of all of this mess. 97-plus percent of our community agreed with me. They came in and signed their children back up to school in the fall, and those, many of those who signed up for virtual have subsequently joined us in-person. It is the best form of education. It is, as our superintendent, with all emails and communications from the beginning of her tenure to today, and her statement, in-person education is our highest priority right now. We have done everything to make it possible. We've reduced layers of mitigation to make it possible, to make our buses run. Social distancing was something that we reduced at the beginning of the year. We made adjustments to our cafeteria policy so our students could eat in a fashion that made it safe for them. We have continued our sports programs throughout even the height of the pandemic. We've continued our extracurricular activities as much as we can, more so than many surrounding regions. We have heroes who are our teachers doing all of this work, our special ed teams, our extracurricular activity coordinators, our coaches, our nurses. Everybody has worked really hard to make this happen and to keep our students in. And we are more fortunate in the fact that we have a highly committed and professional staff, pandemic team, and set of professionals who've made this possible for all of our children. And the fall went very well. Outside of four days, we had to shut down one school. We had a few classrooms here and there, and yes, there are, you know, COVID is here, Omicron is here, but we've been able to manage what we've been able to manage. Our next level of reduced mitigation was announced this evening, and you'll learn about it this week in further details with emails about our quarantine. Many of you know Jennifer Wall and I have sort of, you know, been discussing quarantines at nauseam over the last six months, because quarantines have been a major culprit in reduced school days for our students. Many absences due to what I believe were unnecessary quarantines, and the CDC subsequently made new recommendations, and we're going to implement them accordingly. All of this, though, is in light of making sure we keep in-person, because I can tell you, I can tell every one of you, after sitting up here and trying to fight to get the schools open, once they close, it's really hard to do. And so we're doing everything we possibly can, everybody, to keep the schools open, safe, and functioning for everybody, and that is our highest priority. While I recognize it doesn't keep everybody happy, nor happy with me, that's okay. I'm all right with that. There are folks who come here and send us emails. I may get back to them, I may not have time to get back to them. There's a lot of emails in my box, but I can tell you that every question and every concern and every frustration, I promise to each of you that that question goes to the superintendent, to the pandemic team for vigorous debate and discussion. I thought there were some good points made this evening by our speakers. The protocol of the gentleman talking about wearing a mask, I thought was a good question. I thought the changing CDC guidance that we constantly are faced with, and the irony that comes with some of that, is a good question. And those questions are brought up to the pandemic team. I don't want you to think that this board doesn't ask them, is concerned about them. Every question that we get in the email, this board discusses with everyone. What comes with that debate and discussion may not be something that folks are happy with, but it is, to the best of our judgment and our ability, what we can do. We will continue to work through the pandemic, work with the law, with our legal counsel, with everyone, and I have openly stated in public that I'm happy to work with anyone in Richmond to put together a strategy to find off-ramps or changes in strategy over the course of time, based on the metrics that make it safe and make it something that we can all live with, based on good data, and I'm committed to continue to do that. I appreciate everyone's concerns, everyone's emails. Again, the emotion on both sides of this issue is incredible, continues to be incredible. Boards across the country are facing these same issues. So with that, finally, you know, just, I do need to mention Ms. Zargarpur's husband, Yakub Zargarpur, was honored by the Human Rights Commission the other night. Many of you saw the Afghan refugees leave Afghanistan in August, and it was awful. Many of them ended up here on Quantico, I think about 4,000. Her husband, Mr. Yakub Zargarpur, spent almost every waking minute delivering aid, working with the folks at Quantico Marine Base and the wonderful Marines there who were able to help resettle these refugees. And if you don't know, you know, the Washington DC area has been one of the highest areas for Afghans settling here since the Soviet invasion in '79, and they continue to come here, and they've been resettled, and he has worked nonstop to do that, and I think he deserves the recognition. We have many of our students in this community, from, parents from Afghanistan, and folks who have come to America for a better life, and he has spent every minute, and so I want to congratulate him on that honor, and I think it's well-deserved, and I've seen him do work in the community over many years for many different communities, and so I do want to congratulate him. Lastly, to our folks who spoke on the strategic plan this evening most eloquently, and in the past meeting and the public hearing and the emails we're getting, we're very excited to hear from you all. You continue to be encouraged to go to the website, put in your comments. We will be voting on the final draft of the strategic plan in two weeks. In with, two weeks or three weeks? Is it two weeks? Is there an extra week? Do we have three weeks between these meetings? Two, okay, it's two. I wish you all the best. Tonight's meeting is adjourned.